Commissioner Henderson. Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting of the Deshutes County Commissioners Board of Directors as of December 7, 2020. And
Commissioner Henderson. Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the Deshuts County Commissioners Board to Directors as of December 7, 2020, and in honor of Pearl Harbor today. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Henderson is joining us on Zoom today. So thank you, Commissioner, for being there. Our first action item will be from Dave Givens. And I know this is getting a lot of radio time. I heard it a couple of times on the radio this morning. So Dave, would you like to open up regarding our emergency business grant program with the $2.3 million?
Yes, Commissioners. Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor. Update on statement of work. Just so you know, we have received, as of this morning, 736 applications for the grant. So that's pretty exciting. The statement of work and the IGA that's in process hasn't changed a whole lot. I'd say we've got input from COIC and we've been, we worked through that with their staff and legal department, as well as our own legal department to kind of get all the little pieces together. And so that IGA is, I think, being routed for all the process. And also, as I mentioned, the committee is being formed. I think an email has gone out from Patrick at COIC to the various members to organize some dates for the week after next. The next week, though, no, I guess this week is next week. This week, they're collecting the grants and the grants are expected to be closed Wednesday. And so then they have some input that they have to do and some processed. And then so the following week, which is the week of the 14th, there's a couple of days in there that I think they're anticipating the committee will work on scoring and selecting businesses. So that's what I know unless there's any questions from the board. I think Tom had a couple of things to for, for, to bring up, too.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioners, really the purpose, as we discussed last week, the scope of work which was included in your packet really contains the criteria for how businesses will be assessed for eligibility for grant payments. So we wanted to ensure that you had a chance to take another look at that and make sure that that meets your expectations. We're happy to, you know, tweak it if we, as we can, to reflect any changes that you'd like to see, recognizing that we're kind of deep into the process already. But again, that was the purpose. The, we didn't include the full IGA. It's basically boilerplate. But as we discussed last week, we will compensate COIC for their work in administering the program up to $30,000. And we will pay for that out of non-grant funds. So we'll either Undesignated General Fund or Undesignated TRT likely would be the source for that. So it won't come out of any potential awards. But that's kind of where we are. And we're hoping to nail it down today in terms of the scope of work and be able to move forward as quickly as we possibly can, as David suggested.
So I had first approximated that I thought we'd get like 1,000 applications. So if we're at 732, just dividing that in, that's $3,154 if everyone got something. Of course, there are different parameters. So I'm sure we're going to get some more. Maybe we won't get the 1,000. I talked to some businesses and they'd already gotten their applications in. So everyone, I think, is pretty aware of it in the community. If you're not, don't panic. You still have up till 11:59 PM on Wednesday to get your application in. You really need to have a full application, though. And if we do see something, if someone sees something now, I think, Dave, you said that they could possibly get back and say, you know, you're missing this little bit. But otherwise, please make sure your application is in its entirety. It'll, it'll just help. And I know I read where we want to get the funding out by December 24. So how appropriate is that?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah. So, Dave, I actually had the chance this morning to help someone that I'd refer to the program kind of walk through his form because it was, it was complicated to him or whatever. And so a couple of things that were interesting. One was the question of the explanatory statement. I guess on the form, it's 1,000 characters, not 150 words. It was interesting because I was expecting, well, you got to be 150 words. No, it's 1,000 characters. And then they, it is kind of hard for people to go back forth. I was wondering if people, there's any, set any priorities yet, or maybe this committee is going to do about what impact do prior loans have? How, are those taken into account? Or it seems like that's a hard thing. This particular person had, didn't have any access to other programs. But if people do, is that, I mean, that's going to be something I see that Commissioner Dyer, you'll have to look at is what, how much, you know, do you put on that value-wise? And another thing that was kind of complicated is they're asked whether they're prohibited from operations directed by executive order 2012 or 2065. Well, I assumed 2012 was just the original lockdown. But people don't know that. I mean, so there must, and I said, well, pretty much everything was locked down until we reopen. So that's kind of a question that is a little vague on the form, I guess, to, I haven't seen it on my computer, but he would, he read some of them to me. And I was trying to figure out what they, you know, meant. But I assume that's original. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the original verbiage. And I think the idea, COIC worked very hard to make the, make the application as straightforward as possible. So they broke some things out that I probably wouldn't have. But they did break up into separate responses, the executive orders. And as far as priorities, I think the hope is that the committee will weigh in on some of those. Because we did leave ourselves some latitude in terms of, you know, if we get a whole bunch of applications, we want to be able to be able to distinguish what we are going to fund and what we aren't going to fund. So anyhow, we left ourselves some flexibility there.
The other question I had is whether there's, the first person, the time this person did it, he was rejected. And I said, well, try again or call somebody. Is there someone that's giving technical support during this duration? If I get calls from somebody, is there a number? I've looked at the grant. It looks, you know, it's pretty straightforward. But.
Yes, and the COIC site, and that's at www.coic.org/grant.
Yeah.
It does kick them out if, if it looks like they would not be eligible. And so if they are misunderstanding one of the questions, they also give a reference to COIC, place where they can leave some, I think it's a message and then get a call back.
Okay, so there's a place on the forum?
There is.
Phone number?
Yep.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll get that phone number off that. So I have it in case someone asks. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson.
So the statement of work at the highest level looks, you know, complete for the input from the state and the federal government and how we've done grants in the past. So I want to thank everybody for getting that out there like that. And just like Commissioner Henderson is pointing out, you know, now is when the rubber hits the road for the people that really want to get in there and get the form filled out. So hopefully, it sounds like, yeah, 700 and something applications already. That's wonderful that people have been able to put them through the system. And I would advocate for just that little bit of handholding for the folks that may, may need that help at this point in time to get over that hump if an application is, is a little harder for some.
Dave, I'm just wondering, do we have any tribal owned businesses in Deshuts County?
I, I don't have any familiarity with any of those. But it is part of the criteria because it was one of those things that the state wanted us to focus on, if there were.
Right. I just was wondering if there were. And if there were, and they haven't applied, that we should get ahold of them and let them know. But I just, I'm, Commissioner, Mr. Anderson, are you aware of any?
Commissioner, I'm not. That doesn't mean there aren't any.
Right.
No, COIC was making arrangements to do direct outreach to some of the nonprofits that were identified by name and the attachment to the state agreement. So we can certainly ask them if they are aware of any. I think they have a pretty good handle on the businesses in the county to do that direct outreach.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dave. It looks like we're going to be really busy, especially, I think, it's next Tuesday morning for like four hours, I believe, is our first meeting. So thank you so much for serving as our liaison with COIC.
You're saying, Commissioner Dyer, next Tuesday, like a week from tomorrow?
Uh huh, yes. Next Tuesday, starting at 8:30 in the morning, we have, it's, I believe it's like a four hour meeting that's going to be in my schedule. And I, I was just really worried about that day because I had some other things that I was going to have to move around in my schedule. But it's next Tuesday. So we get everything by Wednesday night. They'll probably do some sorting and then our committee will be meeting on Tuesday. They want to get the money out, mail the checks by the 24th of December. So I, I would think they might be letting people know before that. I mean, you know, with an email before the check actually goes out the door.
But I would suggest that there be a place they could pick them up if they want them. Might want to pick them up on the New Year's, or Christmas Eve day.
Right.
It would, it was. But I don't know if there's a way to do that. But it's only 1,000 checks. You could do it alphabetical or something. People that don't, mail.
That's a good idea because they could, it could take weeks for a mailed check. So. And, okay, great. We'll see what we can do about that, if that's a possibility.
I will check into that, Commissioners, just to see if, you know, if they have any other logistics about dispersing the monies. I also have been working with COIC to try to refine upfront some of the criteria and try to get some instructions ready for the committee. So hopefully, we'll have a quick discussion and keep things moving as fast as we can.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, great. Thank you, Dave. Anything else, Commissioner Henderson?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, following the discussion today, just so we can keep things moving. If the scope of work is okay, if we're ready to sign the IGA, it's set up for my signature. But if, just for parents', if you wouldn't mind doing a minute's motion to authorize signature on the IGA, we'll get that in place.
Okay.
So I move county administrator's signature of document number 2020-811, Emergency Grant Program Scope of Work and Authorized Agreement.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Whitney Hale, item number two, the STIF Advisory Committee update.
Thank you, Chair Dyer. For the record, Whitney Hale Administration. I am here today along with Derek Hoffbauer, who should be joining us on Zoom from COIC. There's Derek. We came to you a few weeks ago and chatted with you about the makeup of the STIF Advisory Committee. This is the advisory committee that oversees the payroll tax that is designated to improve public transit within the state. A few weeks ago, the board reappointed members that had expiring terms to serve a second term on the committee. And today, Derek and I are here to talk to you about our open alternate slot on the committee. So Derek has provided in your packet a staff report as well as an analysis of the applications that were received when the county first advertised for the STIF Advisory Committee vacancies. And I think staff is hoping that the board today, through discussion, could prioritize a list of potential original applicants that might be a good fit for the open alternate position. COIC staff would then reach out to those folks and see if they're still available and interested in serving. And we would try to secure one of them as the, the potential alternate to round out our committee. So Derek, do you want to chime in there? Is there anything else or anything else you'd like to tee up for the board?
Yeah, I think you covered it, Whitney. Again, you know, I think we, you know, having just the names of, of a few alternates, maybe four would be good because we don't know, you know, we would need to reach out to them to see if they're still wanting to serve on the committee. So I don't know if the board has kind of looked through the list and has, has any ideas. And I could certainly, you know, look off the, the ranked committee member list from the, the scoring sheet that was done in 2019 and read off some names as well. But do want to mention that the, the individual who resigned, his seat was representing Redmond as an alternate. And so we could potentially look at, you know, individuals from Redmond who applied but were not selected on the committee. That's one option. Those, Whitney noted, you know, in the memo, that, that we don't necessarily need to replace someone from Redmond. There are already a few Redmond representatives on the advisory committee. So it's to the, to the board's discretion on how to fill the seat.
Okay. So now you're saying we don't really need to choose someone from Redmond?
It's not, yeah. My understanding is it's not a requirement that the board replace an outgoing member with an incoming member of the same, you know, from the same place. You could really choose whoever you feel would be most appropriate and the best fit for the committee.
So with the, kind of the prioritized lists, it's maybe from the previous memo is, I had prepared for this, the prioritized list, is that in the current memo?
I believe Derek provided an updated memo for this week's meeting that does not include that original prioritization, although we can certainly get that.
Well, no problem. I was, so I have it from the previous meetings. So a couple names going down the list. So Mark Lighthouser, previous maintenance supervisor, and then also Jennifer Glover, employment specialist at Billatrie from Le Pine area. So Mark is from Redmond. Those are just two names, as I was doing my homework, kind of going up and down the list, that popped out as starting point. And I don't know any of these people, just, you know, the information they provided and their willingness to fill out the application previously.
So it says Mark no longer works for CIT, CET as a mechanic, but he is a Redmond representative?
Yes, he works at Gary Gruner Chevrolet.
Okay. And what was his score originally? Do you have that available?
Um, yeah, I do have that in front of me. Mark was.
Just like, was he in the middle?
He was way up there.
Fairly high. He was scored number 12. He was ranked 12 out of 48. So he scored, he scored fairly high.
Okay. So it sounds like he has an excellent resume as far as for our transportation.
But he's working with an automotive company now, which is, you know, just kind of industry still. But that's, that's great, private industry.
So does anyone else have another name that they would be interested in? Do we, we just need one today? Is that correct?
I would, I would say maybe at least maybe two.
Two.
If, like, let's say, and maybe prioritize them to, if Mark isn't the number one, we could reach out and ask. But, you know, if he, if he declines because he's got a new job and doesn't have the time, it would be nice to go down to, to, you know, someone else without having to, need to come back each time.
Oh, Derek, I thought you liked meeting with us.
I do. We love, we're just, we're just trying to be efficient.
I thought you said you wanted four to pick from or something.
Yeah, I mean, four would be ideal. If we could get to four today.
I think we can get to four. I'll recommend Christopher Morrow. He's on page 11, package page three. He's a Ben, he's from Ben, but he has experience in transportation generally. He's an agency director in Alaska Department of Transportation. Just going to talk to him. Just going to talk to him about, you know, his knowledge and, you know, connection. I do worry if all he's done, you know, if he's just worked for the state, but maybe he has some other ideas, Alaska's a different, different state than we are, so.
Mm-hmm, great.
Is, what was Christopher's score?
Christopher scored 14, so he was up there in the top tier as well.
Number 14, okay.
Mm-hmm. So, so Chris would be the number two, and, but we also, Commissioner DeBonne mentioned Jennifer Glover. She's actually currently on the Deschutes County STF Committee.
Oh, great.
Transportation Fund. She's also on our Regional Public Transportation Advisory Committee, represents Lapine, and she's been a really good partner for CET and...
But, you know, just on paper, I don't know that I'd want to prioritize one, two, three, four, because it's, I mean, these are just, I'd probably want to meet him and, or if you have some committee that would interview him for 15 minutes or something, he might have really strong impressions of somebody, or it's hard to do that off of paper.
Sure, yeah, I'm, you know, it's to the Board's discretion if you would like us to, you know, have a process where we can, you know, bring forth, maybe have them fill out kind of a supplemental application, or ask, ask them a few more questions. One, are they still interested in serving? Two, you know, how has your recent work qualified you to, to be on this committee since it's been a couple of years since we did the, the recruitment? And then we could bring that information back to the Board.
Okay, so that's three.
So you're saying Jennifer Glover is already on a couple of other committees? Would it be appropriate to have her on this one, or?
It would be appropriate if she has the time and capacity, or she does work with, she worked with CET on the Route 31, the Lapine-Sun River service. It was her group of, of individuals that were using the, the new bus service to get to employment in Sun River.
And then the next few years, this committee will actually merge with our STF committee, so that might be kind of nice to have her have both of those experiences.
Yep, okay, great. Next one I had was Allegra Briggs. As I say, this is just with a cursory view of all the application material, and that was a, another one that jumped out.
And Allegra scored 38 out of 48 in the rankings, and she represents Bend.
What did you see on that, Commissioner DeBonne? I didn't...
I'm just looking at...
I didn't see much on her. I don't see much in the write-up.
I was emergency technology, I guess, just third-party apps, kind of the technology avenue is an opportunity that can be discussed, so she has experience in that. But as I say, I haven't talked to these people, this is really just paper, information on the paper.
Good, interesting.
So Casey, is it Berg?
Yes.
How did, that, how did Casey score?
Casey scored well, he scored 13 out of 48, so just above Mark Lighthouser.
Okay. Would it be possible to add him?
Sure.
Since he is actually a transportation engineer?
Yeah, he's the transportation manager for OESU Cascades as well, so we, we work with them frequently on the, the microtransit program for Ride Bend.
Okay, so now, I think we've given you, what, five names?
Yep, and we could work with those five and come up with a process where we can, either we could do some short interviews, I could work with Whitney to kind of figure out, you know, what your preference is in terms of, you know, helping to prioritize the decision. And I think at first we'd want to reach out and make sure they were still interested in serving and, and kind of go from there. But, yep, we're happy to work with you on the selection.
Great, thank you so much, Derek.
No, thank you.
I'm thinking like calling them right now, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll definitely do this quickly because the committee is scheduled to meet actually tomorrow afternoon and then again in January, so we'll see if we can try to reach out and get this moving so that person might be able to just sort of get visibility into the cycle that's happening right now.
Okay, great.
Are the meetings open to the public?
Yes, they are.
So you actually could invite them, these five to the meeting if you wanted, even though they wouldn't be participating?
Sure. And we'll, we'll plan to give an update to the committee members on the, the vacancy for the alternate position as well.
Great, all right, so are we, we're pretty good then? So you have time to invite them for tomorrow? And we have five people, so we're like thinking ahead, Derek, and it's good. So thank you so much.
Okay, great, yep, and the meeting's tomorrow afternoon, if you all want to join.
All righty, thank you.
Bye. Thanks.
Oh, what time is the meeting tomorrow?
I believe it's 3:30 to 5:00.
3:30 to 5:00, okay. All right.
Yes, 3:30 to 5:00.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so our next on the agenda, Anthony, I believe you should be up there, I know you've been here. And Commissioner Henderson, he did bring us a new document, which I'll put in your box.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome. So, yeah, what I put at each of the Commissioner's stations is just a copy of the PowerPoint that I'll be showing this afternoon. And included with that is a larger version of the map that I have in the PowerPoint presentation, because I just think it's easier to see the Bend Airport that way. And for Commissioner Henderson, I'll have it on the screen, and I'll refer to it again during the presentation. And so unless there are any questions, I'll go ahead and get started.
Okay.
Okay, so for the record, Anthony Rigini, Senior Planner, again, Community Development Department. The item before you, and I'm going to go ahead and start the PowerPoint. Let's see, let me get to... Where is the... Share screen, there it is. Okay, so let's get to the PowerPoint. And I'll start there. So can everybody see that okay, the first slide?
Yes.
Awesome. So again, Anthony Rigini, Senior Planner, the item before you is a, I guess, preparation for first and second reading for an ordinance to amend primarily the airport development zone, which is Chapter 1876 of our zoning code. This is an application that was brought forward by the City of Bend, and there are a couple of, I guess, purposes of the amendments. On the screen right now, it's just an aerial photograph, again, of the Bend Airport, so everybody knows what we're talking about. And there are two primary chapters that the city is requesting an amendment, requesting amendments to, and that's 1876, the airport development zone, along with 18116, the supplementary provisions, and I'll talk about each of those in turn here. There are a couple of primary purposes for the amendments. The first and the, and the major one for the City of Bend is to streamline review of personal use hangars. As staff worked with the city, it also came to our attention that this would be a good time as well to update and adopt some terms and definitions from the Oregon Administrative Rule, OAR, and from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, and their documents. And then the last part of the amendments is to adopt new setback and parking standards. So why the streamlined personal use hangars? Currently, based on our code, personal use hangars are required to go through site plan review pursuant to 18124. And the city was wanting to, and they've really had this request for a number of years, to streamline personal review, personal use hangars and their, our review, because many of the criteria in 18124 frankly are not appropriate for airport development. And so I'm talking about things like trees and landscaping areas, pedestrian walkways, lighting, some of those things that are naturally going to be reviewed and controlled by the Oregon Department of Aviation and the FAA. And so the city has been wanting now for a couple of years to streamline review of personal use hangars. And so instead of 18124, what you'll see on the screen, and also if you're looking at your printout, are a really condensed set of criteria for personal use hangars. And again, the idea here is that the, is ODA, Oregon Department of Aviation, and FAA really control much of the development and the criteria for development at airports. And so the city wanted to streamline down the review criteria to make this process simpler and faster for developers at the airport. At this time, are there any questions from the Commissioners regarding the streamline for personal use hangars?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I'll go on. As part of this amendment, again, we recognize that there were probably some terms and definitions that also needed to be updated. Currently, in our 1876 chapter, we have a use category that's called out as related uses customarily pertinent to airports. And this has caused some confusion over the years, because we don't define what exactly that means in either the zoning code or in the Bend Airport Master Plan. And so as we started to look at this, staff started to look at this with the City of Bend, we recognize that the OAR provides the definition and term that we need, or use category that we need, which is customary and usual aviation-related activities. And as part of that, the city is also requesting adoption of FAA definitions for fixed base operator and hangar. And so here's the OAR definition, and you'll notice if you look at it, it's really the typical things that you would see at airports, takeoff and landing areas, hangars, maintenance of airport facilities. And this just made more sense, rather than to have a, a use category that was not defined anywhere, we could turn to the OAR, which made more sense for our code. And so that's what the city has requested to do. And as part of that, we don't have a definition for fixed base operator, and so the FAA, in their guidance documents, provides this definition, and again, it's much of the things that you would expect to see at an airport, fueling, aircraft rental, maintenance, flight instruction. And then the second definition that they're requesting to amend our code to include is the FAA definition of hangar. And so we, as staff worked with the City of Bend, this seemed to make more sense than sort of our amorphous use category of customarily pertinent. We could have some very specific ideas of the uses that are included in this use category.
Hey, Anthony, this is Phil.
Yes, Commissioner.
I was just asking you, so as you're going through this, this is a request from the City of Bend to change our code, is that what this is?
That's correct, sir, yep.
And is, I mean, why, is there's a backstory to this, about how this came about, or why is there some particular situations out there right now that are...
Yes, over the years, you know, one of the complaints that we have heard from developers at the airport is just how long it takes to get through site plan review. And so the city, again, for a number of years, has wanted to go through and amend the 1876 chapter to streamline that review and the, you know, the, and I'm going to stop sharing here for a second, because I feel like I'm talking to you. And the, you know, the, the city has wanted to go through this process for quite a number of years, but really what they were waiting for was the most recent update to the Bend Airport Master Plan, which they're still going through review with the FAA. And recognizing that it still may be some time before the Bend Airport Master Plan is updated, they decided to come in with what we're, sort of what I'm calling as, as an interim step. One of the things, again, that we hear from, we've heard both from the Bend Airport and the Redmond Airport, is the lack of hangar space in central Oregon. And so this was the city's attempt to address streamlining for personal use hangars, at least until, as an interim step, until the bigger amendment comes through in association with the Airport Master Plan update.
Well, isn't, I think I've heard about a couple of these situations where you're saying site plan review through the county is, takes a long time, because it hasn't, it has a citizen's appeal period, doesn't it, or something that it has to be approved by, or can be appealed by citizens in the neighborhood, or...
Yeah, it has, yes, that's, that's exactly correct. There's a land use process that goes with it. So that's what, that's part of what takes a long time, but also, as Commissioner Henderson, you're familiar with, having had hearings with site plan review, there are a lot of criteria in 18124 that frankly aren't probably appropriate to airport development, particularly considering the fact that ODA and FAA control so much of the physical construction at the airport. It just didn't make sense from the city's perspective to have to go through a site plan review.
I kind of get what you're saying, I just think that the difference too is that the citizens that might appeal something around this airport are county residents, not city residents, so the city has a different interest than the county does in terms of air potentially in some of these, I guess would be my...
Yeah, and, you know, and that's, and that's a great point. The, you know, of all the personal use hangars that we have run through site plan review, not a single one has ever been appealed, because, you know, they're essentially, as you're probably well aware, they're shells. They're just for storage of aircraft. And so this isn't, this particular text amendment would, would not change the land use process, for example, for purely commercial uses or industrial manufacturing uses, which frankly, those are the types of uses that could create impacts, whereas the storage of aircraft generally does not. And so again, it was the city's thought, rather than wait for the update of the master plan to address the chapter as a whole, let's, they wanted to get this part of it through because there really aren't a whole lot of impacts with personal use hangars.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. Any other questions from the Commissioners before I go back to share screen?
No, that's fine.
No? Okay. So go back to, so then again, I ended with the definition of hangar. The next part of the amendments has to do with setbacks. And so currently, 1876 requires a 100-foot setback from Palbut Highway and a 50-foot rear yard setback. The city is requesting an amendment to modify the setbacks to 50 feet from Palbut Highway and 20 feet from the rear yard. And I'm going to refer you to, and again, I apologize, Commissioner Henderson, I should have given you a hard copy earlier.
I can see it, I'm good.
Okay, awesome. So the, if you look in the, particularly the western side of the airport, you'll notice all of those buildings and hangars. Because those buildings and hangars were constructed before we had zoning in many cases out at the airport, they're already within the 100-foot setback. And so the, the city's request to change or modify the setbacks is really to match the existing historic development with setback standards that make sense. You know, at this point, what we're seeing is, as you can imagine, a number of the hangars there from the 60s and 70s, when they come in to replace them, by the terms of our code, we would require them to move back to 100 feet, when in fact, they currently exist at 50 feet from Palbut Highway. So again, the purpose of the setback amendments is to match the criteria with the actual development that has, that is existing and has historically existed at the airport. And it relieves, it will relieve applicants from having to apply, for example, for a alteration to a non-conforming use, because it doesn't comply. Commissioner Adair, did I hear you have a question?
Yes, I do, I, I just had a question. No one is closer than 50 feet then? Does that make...
That's correct.
Okay, so everybody will be okay with that? All right, thank you.
No, you're welcome. No, it's a great question. And so that, the city chose 50 feet precisely for that reason. We wanted, they wanted to capture all the buildings that already exist so that they are not non-conforming, and it makes the review process simpler. And so this is a, just a copy of what the amendments would look like. Currently, collectors are, buildings from collectors are required to be 50 feet, and so now arterials and collectors would be 50 feet, and Palbut Highway in this case is an arterial. And the city also added one more... added one more standard, and this really comes from ODA FAA requirements, which is a minimum setback from internal airport streets, roads, and drives be 10 feet from the edge of pavement. So the last piece of the amendments has to do with parking location. Currently in our code in 116, with the exception of just a couple of zones, parking is prohibited in a front yard. And if you're familiar at all with the airport, and it's difficult to see in the aerial, but if you're familiar with the airport, many of the buildings on the western side of the airport, along Palbute, already have their parking lots. And again, these are historic parking lots in the front yard. So the purpose of this amendment is, again, similar to the setbacks, is to match the code with the existing historic development at the airport. And so this amendment would allow parking in the front yard for uses within the airport development zone. And so this is essentially what the amendment will look like, will just add the airport development zone to this particular provision. So the public process. So this was an interesting public process in that, as you commissioners are aware, typically for text amendments, this is a legislative process, meaning it goes to the planning commission. However, in this case, because the amendments affect only one property, the Bend Airport, and affect only one property owner, it was conducted as a quasi judicial text amendment, which isn't very common for us. The public hearing with the hearings officer was conducted on September 15th. The hearings officer issued an approval and recommended the board adopt an ordinance to, to adopt the amendments. And I'm gonna stop share screen here for a second. So you'll notice on the slide, our code is interesting in that we adopted something from statute in our procedures ordinance. And that is, for amendments which do not require an exception to any goals and do not involve resource lands, are, the statutes allow jurisdictions to essentially give authority to the lower hearings body to make these kinds of decisions. And so the way our code reads, and again, it follows statute, is, in this particular case, unless the amendments are appealed or called up by the board, the board shall adopt the amendments. And at this point, and this is why I stopped the share screen, I'm gonna apologize to the commissioners, I was not aware that in order for board to call up the amendments, I needed to get this in front of you during the 12-day appeal period. And so at this point, we have a set of amendments that have been approved or recommended to be approved by the hearings officer and no appeal. I will note that during the public hearing process, no one other than the Redmond Airport participated, and the Redmond Airport manager, as you can imagine, expressed support for the amendments, noting the lack of public use hangar space in central Oregon. And then the hearings officer decision was not appealed. And so the next steps at this point would be to schedule with the board dates for first and second reading of the ordinance.
So Anthony, are you saying that we don't even vote?
That's correct. And it's, it's, again, it's a quirk in, not a quirk, I shouldn't call it a quirk.
It's unusual.
It's very unusual, and it's interesting that the statute gives jurisdictions the ability to do this, and we adopted it, I don't think recognizing the effect it would have. And I've already been in discussions with Adam in legal counsel about doing a text amendment, because it just doesn't feel right that the board wouldn't have a say, one way or the other. And again, I apologize. If I had brought this to your attention during the 12-day appeal period, certainly the board could have called it up for a public hearing, although, again, with the lack of interest from the public and no appeal, it would have been my hope that the board would not have wanted to conduct a public hearing on these amendments anyway. But certainly, if I had brought them to you, you could have.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, is Adam on the call so he can just repeat what you said, or perhaps Dave, just so that we hear it from our legal?
Yeah, I discussed this with Adam and, Adam two weeks ago and Dave last week, so I believe they're aware of this.
Okay. And there's Peter. And Peter, you didn't respond to your big win on Saturday night.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I did send you an email that said, "Go Bears." Discretion was the better part of valor, knowing that the next time we play, the score will likely be lopsided in the other direction.
It's okay.
And Commissioners, I just wanted to follow up. Anthony and I did coordinate on this. I missed it as well. It's a, we don't get many quasi judicial text amendments. And when I read the provision in Dueschut's County Code 2228, I, I immediately applied it to zone changes. And as Anthony said, it's a, it is an unusual set of texts, something we should change to recognize that the board should always have deference to be able to hear a, an amendment to our code. So certainly something we will, we will monitor going forward. And again, I'll just extend my apologies as well, to the extent that this was something that the board did want to hear. As a de novo hearing, we just literally misread the code. And, and given the other matters that were before, that are before the board this month, there was a sense that this, this matter wasn't significant in its, in its details for, for board consideration. But nonetheless, we certainly were not intending to remove your authority from this matter.
Okay. And I noticed Dave is on the screen. Dave, did you want to add anything?
I believe Anthony did a real good job of capturing the mechanics of all this. And I did double check when Anthony alerted me to this last week. I, and, and the code does read as he indicated, and for the board to have had a de novo hearing, it had to call it up. That being the case, I agree with Peter, we probably do need to take a second look at maybe some code amendments down the road so that, so that that wouldn't be the case.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. All right. So we should put that on our bucket list for 2021?
Yes. And again, it's something that I've already talked to Adam about, and it's just not appropriate for the board, doesn't have a say. And so it's something certainly that we're looking at currently to amend in our procedures ordinance.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
No questions.
Oh, Anthony, I did have a question. You said...
Yes.
The one was 50 feet on, on Palbute. And what is the backside? Is that, are you considering that Gibson Air Road, or what, which line is the 20 feet, the backside?
20 feet would be to a rear property line. So Gibson Air Road, is it Air Road or Air Park Road?
It's just a...
That's actually...
Air Road on my line form.
Yeah, and it's, that's actually a road. And so it would be subject to the local road setback standard. So it's not a rear setback, because that's frontage on a road. So the, the rear property line, it's really unusual at this point. The rear property line is the north property line that does not touch Palbute Highway. That is the rear property line.
Okay. All right. I was just wondering about that, so.
No, great question.
No, it's just kind of, it's, just trying to like, understand. When you drive by this, it's, you can tell it's definitely the airport, the Bend.
Yes.
Anyway, so then, I believe, Commissioner Henderson, did you have any further questions?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Okay. So then we, do we, we need to have a motion then to schedule the first and second reading? Or do we actually, do we, we actually have to approve the text message amendments and then have a motion for the first and second reading?
I'm not certain of the mechanics. I believe it's scheduling first and second reading.
Okay.
I'll defer to Dave.
Well, it said we, according to this, it said we needed to adopt the hearings officer's approval of the text messages, and then schedule the first and second reading. So Dave, could you clarify that for me?
Right. This was gonna be scheduled for a first reading, and then two weeks later would be second reading, unless it's gonna be by emergency. I don't recall that that was the case, but Anthony will correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, there's, at this point, there's, there's not a request for an emergency adoption.
Okay.
And so the, the adoption of the hearings officer's decision and findings, which would be essentially the findings document for the amendments, along with the actual amendments, would be done as part of first reading.
Okay. All right.
Is that possible to do today, or we're gonna schedule that? Is that the idea?
It would be scheduled, I think what we were looking for was December 16th and 30th.
Okay, yeah.
Legal counsel is currently reviewing the ordinance package that I sent over.
Okay.
That's fine. So that's all we're doing, is scheduling it?
Okay, so we're scheduling it?
Yep, at this point.
All right. Wonderful.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I don't believe so. Commissioner Henderson, you're good?
Yeah, I have no questions. Thank you.
Well, thanks, thanks for bringing it to us, because this is the opportunity for the public to hear about it also at our public meeting with our meeting notification. So there has been an opportunity, if somebody had an opinion about it, they could share it with us. Sounds like the record's closed and it's on its path to approval, but it's good to have it at this public meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Eric?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. The Bethlehem Inn plans on applying for funds to purchase a motel in Redmond for Project Turnkey. They plan on partnering with the city of Redmond, and they have requested a letter of support from the county and provided a draft letter late last week. I will note that, that there's a misbilling of, of your name, Commissioner Adair, so we'll correct that. But for board consideration this afternoon is a support letter that will go to the Oregon Community Foundation in support of the Bethlehem Inn's application.
Eric, we don't know how much they're planning on spending, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right. I know I did speak to Gwen about this, and, you know, and Mayor Russell had also thought that hopefully Redmond could do something for our homeless. So there's definitely the need. And I know that having a solid location might be helpful. So do we need a motion then from our group?
Yes, please. A modest motion.
All right.
Oh, I, I only got a couple of questions. So was there a letter, you're saying, that was prepared and you're looking at it?
Yes.
I don't think I have it in my packet from Friday.
It came in after the packet. I sent an email to the board, and then I put it in your, your box, but it was probably after you picked it up.
Is it in an email now?
Yes, it was an email from Friday.
Let me look. If you don't mind, I'll look real quick. Does it say in there, I was curious, so is the Bethlehem Inn planning to do something like what they have now, or what's, what's their, is there, is part of this, kind of describe their business plan with this?
Do you want me to read the letter?
Yeah, or I'll, I'll try to find it here. Is it from you, Eric?
Yes, Commissioners, it's from, from me.
I mean, does it, I guess I'm just trying to shortcut that. Commissioner Adair, does it describe what their plan is, or if it does, I guess...
They want to, I believe, basically, repeat what they do at the Bethlehem Inn, collaborating. And they're the, as the, Inn is the primary, the primary provider of shelter in our region, and their collaborative approach is deeply appreciated across multiple community sectors, concerned with housing stability, including health providers, first responders, educators, and social service agencies. And they are rooted in a trauma-informed best practice. We value the Inn's service and invest financially every year.
Wow.
So, and the fact that we do have an onsite placement of a county behavioral health specialist at the Bethlehem Inn's Bend campus each week, that was mentioned in a paragraph in the letter. They feel that having a Redmond shelter would substantially improve the regional response to homelessness. Because I believe we have like 100...
So I guess what I was kind of asking, I don't see it, I've got the letter up here, it doesn't really describe it. I, it looks like, I guess we assume that they will want to build something similar to what they have now, which is, you know, it's a, it's a set program really, with certain rules and certain, but there really isn't any discussion of what they're gonna do there. And is, are they wanting to own this motel then, and so it's not the city of Redmond, it's just Bethlehem Inn?
I don't know that detail. I don't believe, I don't think Gwen clarified that with me.
Yeah, the Bethlehem Inn will definitely run it. I'm, I'm not sure if they would be the hotel or the owner, or if the city of Redmond would.
Yes.
I guess that's what, you know, they're, they're applying for Project Turnkey, which is, is an, is an amount of money. I would assume the money is tied to a building, but I thought their current building was many millions more than two. I thought it was, I guess I, maybe you know, Eric, but I, I thought they raised $10 million or something for their...
That's correct. I mean, the history is, is the city and the county went in and purchased the motel, and then over the last 10 years or so, they raised money and rebuilt all the buildings. And, and today, what stands is, is all, you know, basically, none of the original motel is on site. My understanding is this is to purchase a motel.
So I guess what I'm getting at, in a way, because there's not much in this letter, and I don't know what their application is like, $2 million might buy a motel like what we looked at in Bend, but it wouldn't buy what Bethlehem Inn does. And I, I like what Bethlehem Inn does. It's not really, it's a pretty sophisticated approach, in my opinion, to what they do in terms of, I don't know, a lot of their, their rules and their, the way it's set up and the timelines, people being there. I mean, it's, but they won't get there with just $2 million. So I'm wondering who's paying the rest of it. I'm all for foundations doing this. I'm not as supportive of taxpayers having to pay for these shelters. So that's what I'm a little bit unclear on, is because we really don't see anything except this letter, which doesn't, I mean, I, I get all of their philosophy and collaborative approach and all of, I think all those things are true, but that's really not. I mean, you know, my question is, who pays the, the other multimillions?
Well, remember the project, what is it, 35 million, of which 5 million will, can be excess for running it for a period of time. So, and I'm not sure, I would think every application would have a different amount of what they actually need for the real estate values in their community.
I, I could try to get Gwen on the phone, if that would be helpful.
Sure, that'd be great, if you can.
I guess my response to that, Commissioner Adair, is that there's no way, in my opinion, that Redmond's gonna get, say, 7 million of 35 million in the state of, in the state of Oregon. So I can see them giving money to 15 different entities, never be it's two or three or something, but I don't see that big operating budget being there. So I see it needing a, you know, the foundation approach, or like it has here in Bend, more than, I mean, that was one of my reservations about doing it with the motel that we had looked at, is there was so much work that had to be done. It was gonna be a big, you know, Commissioner DeBoe, do you have any thoughts on this?
For the city of Bend or Redmond to make an application would be their prerogative. We do have support in the Bethlehem Inn currently in the city of Bend. So as I say, I think kind of the city of Redmond partnership with Bethlehem Inn is their domain. I'm not opposed to a letter of support. I did talk to Gwen a week or so ago, and she was, she was already thinking that Redmond would be the place if there were money available through this foundation. And I don't want to speak for her, but it sounds like she has a vision for how they, they could get the operations funded. And obviously, the, you know, United Way and some of the different grants that come out each year would be part of their package, but she thought she could get there. But I don't have, I haven't talked to her since this letter came in.
Okay.
I just sent her a text message. I haven't heard it back, but I'll try calling her. I just sent her a text message. I haven't heard back, but I'll try calling her now.
Okay. All right.
I, I'm okay with, given what I've heard so far. I just had those questions, but I guess that they don't have to be resolved today. I'm just, um, you know.
Have we heard any more? Is the city of Bend applying also?
Uh, yeah, commissioners, uh, they are. Uh, it was reported in the media. The council authorized an application in last week, so they're putting that together. Uh, I have had a conversation with Eric King and I expect that, uh, in fact, I sent him this letter just as an FYI. I expect Teresa's request from the city to, uh, for the board to also approve a, uh, letter of support for their application. So as soon as I receive that, I'll share it with the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know, Tom, whether they're planning to partner with somebody like Bethlehem Inn or?
Uh, they are looking at a couple of different nonprofits. I don't believe that Bethlehem Inn, uh, is one of them, uh, given that Bethlehem Inn already operates a motel in Bend. I think they're looking at, you know, as you know, Bethlehem Inn is, uh, wouldn't be considered a low-barrier shelter. Um, it is definitely focused on folks in transition out of homelessness as opposed to emergency shelter of that kind. I think, uh, what I've heard is that Bend is looking at a sort of a cross-section that, uh, could include different types of homeless individuals, uh, with different needs and, and different stages of perhaps a transition out. So beyond that, I don't know that anything's been necessarily finalized.
I think you captured what I was trying to say was it's a sophisticated, I mean, there, you used the word not a low entry, no, what was it? Low en-
Low barrier.
Low barrier.
Low barrier entry. And that's, I guess that was a short way of saying what I was trying to say, that it's, it's got a lot of rules and programs and that's-
Gwen's available now.
I have Gwen on the phone. Gwen, can you hear us?
Um, I can somewhat, yes.
Thanks for joining us.
Yes, Gwen, thank you for joining us. Commissioner Henderson had a question. We were just wondering if you had a dollar amount that you, um, your letter was applying for?
I, I heard that Mr. Henderson had a question. I didn't quite hear what that question was.
It's, is there a dollar amount that you're expecting, uh, I guess for the purchase of a motel? Is that your question, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, that's a good start question.
Um, the, the, not from Deschutes County. This would be something that, you know, the funding that we're requesting is from-
Yes.
Um, Project Turnkey.
Yes.
The 30 million, um, for potential motel acquisitions and then another 5 million that would go to the awarded projects for us to have kind of a first-year operating, um, basis for us to go into. And then, you know, we would be operating another Bethlehem Inn, another shelter, similar to our business model here that, you know, looks to our community. Majority of our funding comes from community, but we would be searching out to see what other grants, foundations, and funding would be available as we move into the future and expand the number of people we're serving.
Gwen, do you, I know that Bend is applying also. Do you have an amount that you, you're going to need for the purchase in Redmond?
Can you repeat that, Eric? I didn't-
Uh, Commissioner Adair asked if, uh, if you know how much you're applying for, for the purchase of the motel in Redmond.
Um, we, we don't because we would have to get into phase two. If they accept our application, then we would begin to identify which properties, um, so we don't, we don't have a number.
Okay. That answers the question then.
Can you, can you ask her, Eric, is, is, so because we don't have their application, it's unclear, is, are they planning to partner with Redmond or is it through their foundation they'll, they'll be doing this?
Uh, Commissioner Henderson asks if you plan to partner with the city of Redmond on, on the application and I guess the purchase of the hotel.
Um, we, we spoke with them initially on that and so we're finalizing the application. And because Bethlehem Inn has been doing this for 20 years now and, and, you know, with the help of the city of Bend and the city and the county, um, you know, we have, I think, a good business model both as an owner and an operator. Um, it took us many years and a lot of, of, um, community support, as you know, Eric and Tom and, um, our commissioners. And so we feel like we have a pretty strong model now. We have, um, gotten agreement and understanding with the city of Redmond to move forward with an application. And we've been in touch with, um, the city of Bend as well, so they're aware that we are applying it too. And I feel as though with the growth in Bend and the growth in Deschutes County and how that's impacting Redmond, that both applications should be very strong considerations and our intent is to make certain that both applications are successful.
Great.
I would hope everyone would agree. We need that.
Thank you, Gwen, for answering Eric's call today.
Oh, well, thank you for, um, considering this and being a part of the emergency warming shelter and, uh, year after year, supporting, you know, the work that we do here at Bethlehem Inn through grants and through support of, you know, actually having a, a Deschutes County person here on site. Um, it makes such a difference in terms of the, the ability, our ability to help others because none of us do this alone.
Yes, that behavioral health specialist, that's-
Yes.
Great that, to know that they're there, part of your team. So can we, we have a motion then to support this letter?
Thank you for joining us, Gwen. Please ready. I can do it. So I'll, I'll move approval of a letter of support for Bethlehem Inn to the Project Turnkey program.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeB- Yes, Commissioner?
For me personally, I, I like the, the fact that they're involved. I, I just am really impressed with what they've accomplished and I like them as a, as doing this. So I'm thankful for that. I hope it works out, so.
Yes, Gwen, you're an amazing leader and I, um, I'm so proud that you have, um, been willing to reach up and, um, work in Redmond. So that's great. Commissioner DeBonne?
Uh, I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
I'll vote yes.
And the chair votes yes with a correction with an I. Thank you very much.
We'll make that correction and thank you very much, Gwen.
All right. Thank you all. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Do we have any other items at this moment? No. No other items? Do we have an executive session?
We do.
Okay. We need to take property. We need to take a five-minute, two-minute break then to go to property?
Lot of going on now with regard to these shutdowns and the letters, trying to get the schools open, et cetera. And, um, I know we have another, um, review or probably a, um, update from health again on Wednesday. Um, one of the things that I don't think we've really gotten very clear, and it came up three weeks ago when we, they gave us that report that, uh, Dr. Conway, knock it off, Zach, my dog's barking, um, had done a report when there were, there was, we were being asked by the school district to, you know, help with reopening, getting the numbers down, et cetera, that showed that there are out of 600 cases, you know, three, 30% were from outbreaks and of the, of those, 5% were from childcare, 5% from long-term care, 5% from gyms. But, and then they made the comment that, well, we really don't know with regard to restaurants and bars, which I was shocked with then, and I'm still wondering what do we know locally? And I'd like, I'd like them to answer, ask, I'd like them to be asked about that and report on that. You know, they've been tracing now for eight months or nine months. We ought to have some idea whether bars and restaurants are causing cases in Deschutes County. And we may not have an exact number, but we should have some feel for it, these doctors that are taking care of them all and all the patients, et cetera, and the testers, whoever. And, uh, maybe some other breakdowns about the sources. Because the big hole, when they gave us those numbers was, well, 30% are from outbreaks, 70% aren't. Well, where are those 70? You know, we hear these kind of vague statements like get-togethers and families and, but I really think we should get more information from the tracing. I guess I'm a long way of me saying that, but that's my reason for asking that because it's becoming so controversial and so concerning to so many people about public policy and that's, that's what we should be looking at, so. Maybe somebody could ask that. I don't know. Mr. Adair, whether you can ask them to provide that or you need to come up, you want me to come up with something written to, to ask them, but?
That would be good. I know that because Friday's number was 129, um, it jumped, it went down somewhat today. It's the case, so that really put them out of, um, capacity in order to trace all those. Today's number is 66, which is sixth as far as counties go. So our cases definitely are going up. And today we have 49.
Might be going, they might be going down now. Who knows? But I'm just saying, we don't really know after whatever it is, however many cases we've had over eight or nine months, we really, I don't, I, if someone asked me where the, where these, what are the numbers on the different sources, I, after all these briefings and all this information, I really don't have anything more than I can go back to that one document that was presented about, I think it was three weeks ago to us, and it wasn't even really done for us. It was done for the school district.
Right.
And it was like, well, why aren't we getting more specificity like that? Because we're spending a lot of county money on tracing and yet we're not learning very much, so.
Right. And then our hospitalization number, I don't know if you looked today, it went up to 49. It was, uh, 32-
I haven't seen that. I'd-
It was, it was, um, 32 on Friday. Today it's 49. They don't report it over the weekend. And I believe it's six in ICU, of which of the six, four are on ventilators. But like, I was just reading this weekend yesterday, the Cleveland Clinic has been using melatonin, which sounds so unusual. And it is the Cleveland Clinic that the article I was referencing has found that by having, no one has died that's been put on melatonin. And they actually leave the hospital, I believe, within seven days instead of the usual 13. So, you know, I haven't seen that anywhere. And, you know, it's a pretty reputable source of information in the fact that it is Cleveland Clinic. So, you know, melatonin, I think there's probably going to be a rush on it.
All right. So we'll put some questions together along that line.
Right. If you could, I, I understand what you're saying because, yes, how is it happening? I mean, I hear about young people and they test positive and they live in an, you know, they live with like three other people and those people don't want to get tested or they do get tested and, but then they keep going out and it's, you know, it's highly contagious. So it's, it's a very, um, it's a very difficult thing. And then when I was in Sisters this weekend, people there were actually, for the most part, wearing their mask. And yet I saw a whole family of five people yesterday wearing their mask below their nose. And, you know, it's like, well, you're wearing a mask, but you're really wearing it so incorrectly if it really does matter. So, and then we have our businesses that are going to lose everything if they don't get opened up again. So is it really fair to our restaurants that are closed and our gyms who haven't had any cases? Um, you know, I really, um, having our 2.3 million isn't enough. I don't think we can, um, I don't think there's enough money on earth to, um, actually make up for the amount of money that people have lost the last eight months by being closed down. And then remember, we finally got to open up in May and then we got to open up a little more. And now, you know, things are definitely going, going the other way. It's really hard for people out there. And I can totally, um, I understand their pain.
If it adds any lightness to it or what, I happened to be watching television last night. And so C-SPAN had, uh, the British government and they, they were grilling the prime minister, you know, the way they did over there, the different legislators all pop up, ask a question, the prime minister has to answer to him, answer that question. He sits down and somebody else pops up and asks a question. And it was all about COVID policy, just like we're seeing in our country, but very interesting to watch, you know, the same kind of thing going on and the questions about what should be open, what shouldn't be open, how many cases they were done, well, we, you know, we've had more cases. And there's lots of back and forth by different parties and it's quite interesting to, I hadn't seen that before or recently, but-
Well, they actually approved our un-American-made drug before we have. So they haven't approved, they're already, um, giving it. And I, I saw in the news today, they were deciding if the Queen was going to get a shot or not. The Queen and Prince Philip. So, yeah, they're way beyond us. But hopefully they are going to start shipping out vaccinations to Oregon. We're going to get for our population originally for, um, you know, the vulnerable healthcare workers.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll, if you send an email, I'll forward that on, Commissioner Henderson, or send it and just, that sounds good. So we need to take a teeny break right now and for executive session. Okay, thank you so much. All right. So we have a real property E to, um, open up with executive session. Kristi?
Good afternoon. Um, so, uh, the last version of the MOU went to Ben Harrow's foundation and I reported back that they're in agreement with the language in that, in that, um, doc. Um, that same document and the most recent version of the ground lease has been with COVO for some time now. And, um, I haven't, uh, received any feedback. I did reach out to Eric Tobiasin today and asked if he had spoken with them. And he said he's been in contact with their chairman, Dennis Merrill. So he's hoping to have some feedback, uh, to us today through him. Um, but that's really the extent of what I have to report back.
So Eric said you, you should hear today?
That's what he said in, in Eric's email. He said he's been in contact with their chairman, Dennis Merrill, and he's hoping to have some information to us today.
Okay. All right.
So, Kristi, I have a question. Um, this Phil, uh, then do you have the, the final draft they've seen then that we could get a copy of or?
Yeah, I can forward you exactly what I've sent them. Yeah, absolutely.
Keep track of where we are and, and, uh-
Sure, I'll send that over to you via email.
I'm surprised it's taken that long. He, K W, when I talked to him last week, he seemed like they would be moving on. And I wonder-
Yeah, I mean, just to be candid, I haven't gotten, uh, I think the last even response I've gotten from them was mid-November. Um, and I've left phone call, I've left messages and sent emails and I've just haven't gotten any response. So it seems that they're going directly to the board, which is obviously totally fine, but I'm not getting any feedback from them on what's, what their, you know, thoughts are concerning the agreement.
Yeah, they haven't really gone to us. I mean, I, I called him because I know- Yeah, they haven't really gone to us. I mean, I called him, because I know him. I just called him and said, "How's it going?" and checking in, and then seeing if he had any questions, and told him we were, I basically, I basically told him that we had come to kind of what we thought was the agreement that we liked. And so, what he was seeing now is what we were, we'd agreed on. So, he knew from us that that was, wasn't a rough draft that we're, we hadn't seen. I said, "We've looked at it, we've talked about it as a commission, and so, what you see in front of you is where we are. So, if you have any questions, let us know." I mean, that was what I basically, I was just trying to support what you're doing, but...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And that's exactly what I let them know, too, that that was an agreement that both the, you know, the county and Ben Hiro's Foundation had come to terms on that, and that we just needed their feedback as well, because they're a party to that agreement as well.
Yeah. Well, in some ways, they're a bigger, you know, they got the law, it's easy to build things. It's another thing to operate them for, you know, and so, they have a longer term liability and obligation, in a way.
We may now adjourn our meeting. And hopefully, I can get on my warp-speed call from the White House right now. Thank you very much. Have a, please, wash your hands, wash your hands, use sanitizer.
Wear a mask.
Be safe out there. Wear a mask, but get some fresh air, because it is pretty nice.